We're gonna go ahead and call to order the Select Board meeting for May 17, 2021. Welcome, everyone. I will try to move through the first part of the agenda, which includes appointments and reports as quickly and efficiently as we can, hearing everybody. And we'll start with the minutes of the Select Board meeting of April 20, 2021. The meeting minutes were in your packet, and you had an opportunity to make any notations on that, but are there any other corrections? Is there a motion on the floor?
I move that we accept the minutes for April 20th as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted in your packet. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a roll, and that's what we need to do whenever we meet in virtual format. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, and usually I forget to vote, so everybody will get on my case when that happens. And the warrant was warrants 44, 45, and 46. Is there a 48?
Yes, there's a 48.
And that's a separate one, 47 and 48. Okay, excuse me.
Yeah, 45 and 46 together.
Okay, so yes. 44, 45, and 46 together. I'll turn it over to you, Chris, because you'll be able to efficiently talk to us about it.
Okay, 44, 45, and 46. It was, payroll was $19,614.73. Accounts payable was $29,584.29 plus $360. So you had a total of $49,559.02. There was...
This is the small one.
Yeah, this is no schools in here, so there wasn't really anything outstanding in the warrant.
Chris, I have a question.
Yeah?
So there's a very small check, $1,400, to Cushion Construction. I assume that we are all finished paying the snowplow contract. Is that right, Eric or Chris?
That, in the next warrant, I believe we gave him his 10% that we owed him at the end of the contract.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that we accept warrants 44, 45, and 46 for $49,559.02.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 44, 46, and 45 in the amount of $49,559.02. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce? Yes, okay. Go right ahead, Chris, with warrants 47 and 48, please.
47 and 48. Employees was $20,321.14. Counts payables was $384,438.72, for a total of $404,759.86. There was the school payment of $302,909.02. We had to refund a citizen's taxes because he paid them and his mortgage paid them, and that was $29,2542. We had some safety equipment for the fire department, $8,493, and Cushion's 10% for the end of the contract, $24,118.01. I make a motion that we accept a warrant 47 and 48 for $404,759.86.
Sir, a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 48 and 47, or 47 and 48, in the grand amount of $404,759.86. I'll have an initial question, and we'll see if there are any other questions. So my question is, we mentioned Cushion Construction final payment, the 10%, both in this one and the last one. So is the $1,400 the correct one for the 10%? Was this a regular payment, or vice versa?
This was a 10%. He did something for the culverts, I believe, in the $1,400.
Okay.
That's right, Chris. It was a special culvert job that he had done for us for the $1,400. I wish 10% of the contract was $1,400.
That would be nice.
It did seem a little on the low side there. Are there any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll, and I think I've restated the motion. So Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes, and I would like to start by turning over Select Board Communications first to Dennis Price, our vice chair, who has a presentation.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak about this, and I want to give just a little bit of talking. I would be remiss if I miss this opportunity. It seems to me that it was important to talk about this this evening because I think it is a tremendously positive story. It's a positive story that happened in our town, and it's the groups of towns that make up our high school, and it's just what we needed, I thought, during this pandemic. So Travis Magnuson is here with me. Travis, I have to talk about you before you get a chance to talk. So if it's awkward, that's okay. But I wanted to say this. For the duration of a basketball season that was unlike any other, the Miranda Cook Boys basketball team stayed focused and determined, led by their coach, Travis Magnuson, and his hard-working crew of assistants and parents. This team managed to deal with everything that the pandemic gave them, in addition to everything other teams gave them: wearing masks, following COVID protocols, sitting out, draining threes, getting to the line. This team did it all with confidence and a swagger that they took into the playoffs and eventually to the championship. Might not be a gold ball, but how many teams can say they won the crystal ball? Now, as one of my favorite baseball players, John Lackey once said, when asked about how much he wanted to win the championship, I quote, "I didn't come here for a haircut. I came to win." And win, the Black Bears did. They won all of them, in fact, as this team finished an undefeated season capped with a beautiful piece of hardware. The story alone would be great if it ended there, but it gets better, like a twist that only can be the human drama that sport can offer. Each year, the state of Maine declares a Mr. and Miss Basketball. Well, this year's Mr. Basketball in the state of Maine was Miranda Cook's own Cash McClure, who will continue his education and playing in New Hampshire next year. And just as he said he watched Ryan Martin win this award so close to his home, imagine the other young basketball players watching Cash bring this tremendous honor back to MCHS and our towns. The town of Reedfield takes this opportunity to recognize this team, this coach, the assistants, parents, Cash McClure, and every parent and friend who supported them and helped them along the way. And it is my pleasure to give the floor to Travis. Travis, you have it.
Thanks, Dennis. That would be hard to kind of go after that, I guess, but there was a few words I just wanted to share about the team. First, Dennis, thank you for recognizing us here. We really appreciate it. Unfortunately, not many people could come because in a small school, we've got a baseball game tonight. We've got lacrosse practice, so we got all kinds of different things happening tonight. But, you know, like you said, you know, we knew we were gonna be the top Class B team coming back after last year, and it made, you know, everything with COVID this summer, this fall, even more nerve-wracking, not knowing if we were even gonna play, because it was looking like a month before the season that we might not be able to even have any games. So with the hard work of the players, what ended up happening is, we did get to play. We ended up, like you said, having a regular season, having a playoffs, and I think because of their hard work, we became not only, you know, what we thought was the best team in Class B, but really a once-in-a-lifetime type team. You know, and you talked about it a little bit, but we were 16-0. We beat teams by an average of 40 points per game. We scored 87 points per game. And we played actually teams that were harder than what we would have played in Class B. We played 11 Class A teams and one Double-A team. And then in our central main playoffs, before, when we won that championship, we had our closest game was 21 points. So it was really a dominating performance by the players. Like you said, they worked hard throughout the whole season. They had a great attitude, and, you know, I'm really proud of them. Not only were they a great team, great players, but they're also great people that showed tremendous character. They look, they're role models to young people in town, and we have a lot to be proud of. So I'm really happy that you got to share this with some other people, and I'll be sure to tell my team and people that weren't on here the things that you said about us. So thank you. We really appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Travis, and thank you for the rest of the Select Board and our guests here. I'd like to recognize a good thing when we see it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Travis, and congratulations. Are there any other members of the Select Board who can go up against Dennis's comments?
I'll save all mine for later in the meeting.
Chris?
I just want to say congratulations. That was quite an effort.
Yeah, can we clap? I mean, it's... We can all clap online, right?
That's right.
Very good job, Dennis, and congratulations, Chris. Marvelous season, and it's too bad that there couldn't be a gold ball at the end of it because of the COVID, but I think this speaks volumes to the caliber of the team and the quality of the individuals that you coached.
So thank you very much. Great. Thank you all, and are there any other comments by Select Board members on any other topic at this point? If it's... If the Select Board would agree with me, I would like to move Town Staff Reports and Board Committees, Commissions, and Department Reports to, after appointments, Proceed with Public Comment, and then to Appointments. So that'll save around 15 minutes, so people who are just attending for just those purposes won't be delayed too long, or too much longer. Is that okay with the board?
Yes.
Great. Someday, I'm just gonna iron fist that, though. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Select Board on any topic? I'm here by recognizing anyone who wishes to do so. We did have some communication issues with the public hearing, although there were ways to get a comment in or a question. I do feel bad that there were technical issues as we juggled three different ways of trying to communicate. And that's no fault of anybody, but just the wider technical challenges that exist sometimes with Zoom and cable and so forth. So are there any public comments? Seeing none, in case somebody comes in a little later, I will certainly recognize them. Then we'll move on to the appointment of Chip Stevens as CEO, LPI. I'm gonna go ahead and ask you to speak to this, Eric.
Sure, thanks, Bruce. And we're actually appointing technically Chip, who is the CEO, LPI, as the E911 Addressing Officer. So this is one of the roles that kind of falls under that umbrella of the CEO, LPI, but we do need an individual appointment, and our ordinance says that that needs to be done by the Select Board. Otherwise, I, you know, he's done a fantastic job. He's already started to engage in some of the paperwork, just can't sign anything officially, and it does help to have that official designation. So my request is that you please appoint Chip as the E911 Addressing Officer for the town of Reedfield to ensure that people have proper and legal addresses for all these new homes we see coming into town.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chip Stevens, our current CEO, as our Addressing Officer for E911.
Again?
It's been moved and seconded to make that appointment of Chip Stevens as the E911 Addressing Officer, with the note that Mr. Stevens is our CEO. I'll go ahead and call the roll unless there's any discussion. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph? Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. We'll consider the appointment of Sonia Clark as warden and for the June 8, 2021 election. I don't believe she is here, and neither does she need to be. She has been our warden for a number of years and a number of elections, and we're happy to have her continue, and I'm gonna go ahead and personally move that appointment. Could I have a second on that?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Sonia Clark as the warden for the June 8, 2021 election. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes, and now we'll move on to ballot and election clerks for the June 8 Town Meeting election. In your packet is a list of the ballot election clerks. That is a public record. They're Democrats, Republicans, and they will be utilized in even... In other words, if three clerks, I mean, if three ballot and election clerks are needed, there would be three from each party, and so on and so forth. So I can read the names, or we can simply go ahead with the record that exists, and I think that's fine, by the way.
I'll make a motion to accept the list of appointment for the 2021 ballot and election clerks as presented in the packet.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and so just noting further on this, so this gives the town clerk the ability to draw from that pool, because there's like 3, 6, 7, there's about 12 names on that list. Great. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. We'll consider the appointment of Nate Rudy to the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. Nate is here. Nate, whenever we make an appointment of somebody that we haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, we just want to say hello. We want to say thank you for your volunteerism and give you an opportunity to say hello to the board as well, and there are any questions. This is a great place to deal with them. I don't know you that personally, but I know of you, and I know you have a great deal of municipal experience, and I really appreciate... I didn't even know you lived in Reedfield, to tell you the truth, but I really welcome that wide range of experience and perspective and background. So welcome to Reedfield, no matter how belated that may be.
No problem. It's not that belated, but thank you. It's nice to have an opportunity to give something constructive, I hope, to the community where I live.
Excellent. Any questions or comments you would like to share with Nate?
Just thank you very much. Sorry?
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you very much for doing this, and it's nice that, you know, sometimes municipal items at home can seem a little bit more engaging, perhaps, than... at work, so thank you.
Got it. See you in the neighborhood.
Yes, sir. You know it.
Thank you, Nate, for volunteering. You'll probably know more than all the rest of us put together. But it will be great to have another person from Reedfield. We've been down to just me for the last couple of years. So this is awesome to have another Reedfield representative to join us. I think we're gonna be meeting in June. We meet four times a year. July is our next scheduled meeting, but I'm pretty sure we're gonna have an off-schedule one. So we'll let you know in plenty of time.
Look forward to it.
Do you have any questions for anybody, Nate?
No, I really don't. I think it's clear. It's a... I asked Eric if there was something constructive that I could do in response to my feelings and concerns about some mail I've been receiving, and he produced this opportunity for me. I'm happy to help. I am tremendously busy with the town of Gray, but that doesn't mean that I can't make some time to do something constructive and helpful to the town where I live. So I thank you all for your service, and I know that it's a big job, and I appreciate the opportunity to have a tiny little spot where I can get started in contributing here in town.
Awesome. Awesome.
Could I take a motion?
I'm making a motion to appoint Nate Rudy to the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, beginning tonight and ending on 6/30/2023.
I second that. Go Hokies.
There you go. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Nate Rudy to the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. Is there any further discussion on the appointment? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes, thank you.
Catherine? Yes.
Bruce is a yes, and as I tell all new appointees, you're welcome to hang out for the entire meeting. You're also, you also can have a technical difficulty and fade fast, so thank you so much.
I appreciate y'all. I'm gonna step out, but thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I can't be.
Is Lisa Garside here, please?
No.
No, but we have been waving in-person initial appointments during COVID. If that's not a problem with anybody, I would go ahead and upon review as an alternate, and her interest in the main Turtle Project and so forth, and her background with a financial services company, I think she would probably be a very good applicant to fill this position.
That sounds fine with me, Bruce, but the appointment sheet doesn't have anything on it for dates. Eric, do we have dates?
Let me look really quickly at that. I believe it's, as an alternate, we could just point for three years until 2024, but let me, let me go back and see if I can find really quickly.
While you're doing that, we'll defray that appointment to, after Ms. Jackie Druin, who is here to, for an appointment to the Library Board of Directors. And thank you, Jackie, for being here. I've formerly served on that board as well. It's a very important one in town. So again, just like I mentioned to Nate, this is an opportunity for you to ask us any questions and for us to just say hello and thank you for volunteering, and the library group is a very active group, so I think you'll enjoy doing that.
Well, I appreciate your appointing me, and I'm looking forward to working with the group, and I hope that I can be helpful.
Great. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts to share with Jackie?
No, I just have a question because it says that this is only through the month of this June or through the time period of this June. Is that correct?
That's correct. It was a result of the resignation last month or the month before of the person holding the seat. So when we do the slate of reappointments that we typically end up going through in June to re-up folks, I hope that Jackie would be part of that slate.
I will, if you let me.
That's a draft decision. Go ahead, Catherine.
Your committee chair should let you know that because your position is expiring, if you'd like to stay on, I don't know, if you just have to let them know, and then that committee chair lets the town manager know, and then we just automatically re-up you.
Okay, all right.
So you don't actually have to come back and do this again.
Okay, good.
It's a little like this.
My being here, but...
Once you're in, you're in.
Oh, good, good.
Thank you very much for volunteering to do this, and I think sometimes just being interested and willing to help is a great reason to get involved, and if you don't have enough experience, I'm sure someone will lend you a hand in bringing you up to speed.
And they did on the Trail Committee. They were great, so I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jackie Druin to the Library Board of Trustees for a period beginning tonight and ending on June 30 of this year, 2021.
I'll second that with a request that you do reconsider another three-year term afterwards. It's been moved and seconded to approve Jackie Druin to the Library Board of Directors. Is there any discussion on that appointment? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes, and I believe that dog is a yes as well. Is that yours, Dennis, or is that yours?
Six months old. I am sorry. I will mute myself.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
Just like we said to Nate, you're welcome to stick around, and you're welcome to say good evening or fade out or whatever. Thank you so much for being here. Do we have an answer, Eric, on Lisa Garside's?
Yes, we do. June 30, 2022. I confirmed on the website and on the Trio platform, so we're doubly confirmed. That's the end date.
And that's an alternate position?
Alternate position. The committee proper is fully staffed.
I'll make a motion to appoint, when I get to the name, Lisa Garside, to the alternate position for Conservation Committee, beginning tonight and ending June 30, 2023. Sorry, 2022. Thank you.
So was that a second, Ralph?
Yes, it was.
Okay, great. So it's been moved and seconded to appoint Lisa Garside as an alternate on the Conservation Commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And Bruce is a yes as well. Great. We'll go back to Town Staff Reports. Eric, you're muted, and I believe you have two reports, the Treasurers and your own report.
Yes. So I'll start with the April Treasurers report. I'll make a note that the March report that was held up last month is available on the town website under the meeting at which it was intended to be presented. So the April 20 meeting has the March financial reporting. This report is for the month of April, and I'm presenting it tonight in proper sequence. The check recalculation was completed through April 30, and our accounts are in balance with our statements. We did have one abnormal item, which was that an agency check, basically a check that's issued to a third-party agency through payroll, did not post properly, so we had to manually post that, and so there is a note on that in the documentation attached to the... to the report, but everything's, everything's well with that. The audit is still being, or was still being completed in April. It is now complete. We finally got a copy of the draft last week, so that is a big relief for us. But as far as April goes, it was still being completed at that time, and the final budget was approved by the Budget Committee in April. And we also received news that you're all aware of at this point, that that 0.07% increase from the school budget does confirm that we will be seeing a very small reduction in the, in the mail rate, or I guess I should say, in the amount of money folks are paying out of their pockets for taxes. Moving on to comments, revenues and expenditures should be about 83% for the year-to-date. Receipts are up for both the month and the year-to-date, and that is for the same period last year. Majority of that difference is attributed to the impacts of COVID-19. So you think back to April of last year, we were struggling through the first couple of months of the real heavy business related to COVID, and that's gonna show up for the next several months as basically deficits and revenue not looking the way it should through April, May, June. I think by the summer, we had started to rebound on some of that, but that's gonna be a trend you'll see for, you know, many months to come as we do these comparative numbers. Revenue for the month of March is up dramatically from the same period last year, again, for that very same reason related to COVID. Motor vehicles, excuse me, a second here. A fire tone test is going off.
Eric, can I interrupt for a quick second?
Sure, yeah.
Where did you say I can find this Treasurers' report?
Uh, it's under, um, the agenda for the Select Board meeting for, um, if you go to the Select Board page, there should be a column off to the right. We're trying to transition over to that proper format instead of just dumping everything into a, a webpage off to the side, but, um, were you able to find it, Catherine?
Um, no.
So if you go to the Select Board page on the website-
Don't go to where it says agendas and packets, but over on the right where it says agendas.
Where it says agendas, yeah. Um, we're, we're in transition on that one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, it should be right. Okay, great. No problem. Sorry for the confusion. So, um, the revenues are up two point eight percent when compared to the prior year. And for the month, we're down about two percent. Excuse me, expenses for the month are down about two percent compared to the prior year. Whereas we're up six point five percent for the year as a whole. And the percent difference between year-to-date expenses and the number that we're seeing for prior years, uh, that, that continues to drop as we get further away from some big capital expenditures earlier in the fiscal year. So outside of that, everything looks, uh, looks, uh, pretty standard. There's always some variation and as I said, COVID has caused a lot of noticeable differences when comparing one year to the next and one month to the same period a year later.
Are there any questions for Eric on the Treasurers' report?
I have one.
Please.
Does the state have a deadline for filing local audits? And if so, is our process on schedule for that?
I don't believe there is any statutory requirement that, that, I think it has to be completed, but I don't believe there's a deadline. I can look back at that. What I can say is that we are probably the furthest back we've ever been, uh, as far as getting an audit from an auditor. I think maybe the second year I was here, we may have had a delay like this. I think a lot of it, especially if you ask the auditor, has to do with the fact that that they were suffering from COVID as well as far as the ability to get out into the field uh, and then the transfer of information, uh, being challenging. So, I, I don't like that answer. I think that they, they should have been able to do better by us, uh, but they have not. But, uh, but here we are. We do have a draft, uh, and, um, it, 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 it looks right so far. Teresa and I are both reviewing it. Uh, but all I can say is that I'm disappointed in this timeframe, but, uh, we're not in any legal trouble or any statutory trouble, um, at this point.
This is why your contract-
Contract with these folks.
This is the last year, so we will be putting out an RFP for, for audit services for the fiscal year ending next month. Uh, and that will be likely a two or three-year contract, similar to what we did this last time around. I will say that a number of other towns are, um, struggling with audit services just like many other professions, the, the folks that have been in the field the longest uh, and that were near retirement age or past retirement age, many of them left the field because of COVID. Uh, so it's just another area where they're struggling with shortages of, of qualified personnel. Uh, and I, I'm not saying that we're going to get stuck with, with this firm again, uh, but we want to be aware that when we go out to bid, uh, for, with RFP, we might not get as many responses we would otherwise. So, uh, that's just the summary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Treasurers' report? Seeing none, why don't you go on to your manager, managers' report, please?
Yes, thank you. I'll try to be quick on this one as well. Rose, sweeping should be completed, um, or started later this month or early next. Um, it's not unusual to have our sweeping completed in that timeframe. However, uh, with spring being so early, uh, it does feel a bit late. Um, and honestly, it probably is a little bit late. Uh, but we haven't been able to, again, with this vendor anyway, get, uh, any more timely, um, sweeping just because of where we are in the queue, uh, relative to other towns that they were likely doing business with before us. Road paving should be- Bill, could you, uh, maybe mute that one line?
Yes. Thank you, Eric.
Yes. Jackie is not muted.
Wait. Nancy, Nancy, I have to go.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Life goes on.
It happens. Thank you very much. Um, uh, so road paving on Plains Road and sort of in Hill Road should be starting, uh, before the end of the month. We got confirmation from our contractor that was selected, uh, a few months back that, um, uh, they would be starting at the end of this month. Uh, we have RFPs out for striping and crack sealing services and a tree work RFP, uh, is the next item that's in the queue. Uh, and that will be to help, uh, cut back brush and trees. Uh, we very much want to start looking at roads like Plains Road where we're having quite a bit of encroachment, uh, and also some pretty negative impacts on the road surface condition in the spring. Uh, and other times of year, as a result of the shading that's happening, uh, it, it makes the frost heaves worse. It makes the, the mud thicker. Uh, it's just a, a real detriment. So cutting back those trees is going to be a real benefit when we do get that taken care of. Uh, the bid package for winter road maintenance was released in March and the bids were due originally on April fifteenth. Uh, no bids were received at that time, so we did reopen the process. And, um, again, did not get a, a result that we were looking for. We had no formal bids. Uh, and we're going to talk about that later tonight, but I just wanted to give that background as far as process and what we've been working on, uh, on that issue for the past few months here. We are preparing to replace the picnic structure roofs. Um, and I guess it's really more the sheathing, just the, um, the, the shingles uh, at the, uh, the beach and also install the, uh, a new utility pole on the opposite side of the driveway uh, at the, um, at the beach so that we can have power dropped to the existing building, which would be a wonderful first, um, to be able to have lights in those changing rooms and other, other benefits of just having power where we need it. Um, so that's all happening. I'd say within the next month and certainly before the end of the fiscal year. Any questions on any of the maintenance and infrastructure items before I move on?
I'll just move on.
All right, transfer station. Uh, we should have internet service at the transfer station by the end of this week. We, um, I have a schedule for the twenty-first to have, um, the, uh, spectrum come in and do a drop. Related to that, we are nearing the final steps in selecting a, a, a point of sale system provider. Uh, we're likely going to be working with, um, R and R OS, which is the local company that, uh, put our camera systems in place at the town office and transfer station. Uh, this system will greatly improve efficiency of operations at the transfer station. Uh, beyond accepting all forms of payment and recording it electronically, uh, this will save, save staff time with respect to, uh, duplicating a data entry that happens on the slips. Uh, we'll be saving some money on printing costs. We're not having to print triplicate receipts. Uh, so overall, um, it will be a, a big improvement. Uh, and we also do expect to have that in by the end of the fiscal year. Hopefully a soft opening before the end of June. Uh, we continue to work on rolling out our composting program and we've run into a few setbacks there, most of them related to time, uh, availability, uh, and some of it being resource availability, um, getting steel wire and, um, uh, materials for the large compost bins has been a little bit challenging, but we should have those within a month. The Hazardous Waste Collection Day will be Sunday, July eleventh from eight to noon. Pre-registration is required for that. Uh, we will have multiple towns participating and folks will be asked to set up a time block, a fifteen-minute time block when there are two arrive and drop off their materials. So we can keep the line moving quickly and smoothly and not have a, a big, uh, block like we had when we first, uh, opened this up last year. Uh, the last item for the transfer station is that we will once again be offering summer hours. Uh, and, uh, those will be on Sunday mornings from eight to noon. The extended hours will, uh, run from the weekend after Memorial Day to the weekend before Labor Day. So essentially the full summer season, as is traditionally viewed, with the exception of those two holiday weekends and also the Fourth of July, which is, uh, on a Sunday as well. So we're very pleased to be able to offer that again. Moving on to administration and personnel, uh, the town office is open for, uh, for foot traffic. We're going to be talking about COVID restrictions and, and, and guidance and all of that later in the meeting, but, uh, no appointments are necessary. Folks can just come on into the town office. Uh, also, we are hiring for a seasonal, uh, full-time grounds maintenance position. If you know anybody that's still looking for work, uh, either a young person or someone that, um, might have some time off in the summer, we're eagerly looking to fill that spot. Uh, our new clerk in training, uh, and CEO are both picking up, uh, their responsibilities quickly and working to get up to speed as, as, as soon as they can. They're doing great work. We're very grateful to have both of them onboard. And I want to thank them for their efforts, but also thank the, um, uh, members of the public for their patience in working with people that are still learning the positions. Uh, and that goes for, uh, the whole office really, because we're all having to take time and do training. Uh, and things just move a little bit slower when you're doing that process, but in the end, we're going to have some great employees uh, that, uh, I expect will be able to provide fantastic service in the very near future here without any assistance. Uh, the town meeting secret ballot vote is on June eighth and that is from eight AM to eight PM at the Alphonde Athletic Center at Kent Hill School. Uh, absentee ballots are available currently. However, we're asking folks to hold off on the request until after this Thursday, when the school will vote upon their piece of the, um, of the budget, which we can then include their, their ballot for, um, for, for, for secret ballot vote, uh, in addition to the one from the town. So we do have ballots available. If you just want to vote for that, you can, but again, we're wanting folks to hold off until uh, we have all the ballots pulled together. And that is my report and I'm happy to take any questions.
I have a quick one. Uh, going back to the, the minutes of the Solid Waste Committee, it looked to me like there was, um, another town, it wasn't in our original loop for household hazardous waste that it's, had expressed an interest in participating. Is that going to be open to, uh, newcomers, so to speak, uh, for the July collection?
Yes, it will. So we're actually going to be bringing, um, in, uh, the town of Belgrade uh, to help, um, offset the, the operational cost of this. Uh, and we've discussed this with them. We, we think that they're going to have a minimal impact. Uh, they typically do waste collection twice a year, uh, once in Winslow and once at Augusta. Uh, and so this year they're planning on starting with us in, in, in July. Uh, and so they've given me some indication of their numbers. Uh, and they're actually a lot closer, even though they're a larger town than us, uh, their numbers are a lot closer to what we, we might see from Fayette or Wayne. So, uh, we're fairly comfortable that we can bring them in without any impacts to the service that we're providing to the folks that are part of our, um, three-town transfer station.
Yeah. Whether or not that, that additional volume is going to cause delays and, and long lines, which can happen, given the infrequency of these collections. And, uh, you seem confident that that additional volume isn't going to add to the cost of the collection, but I'm assuming that's a, that's a town-by-town share once the census is taken.
Well, uh, it's close to that. So what we, we bill basically on, um, the, the population or a similar metric uh, for the setup costs. So that gets split out that way. Uh, and then the residents individually are, are, um, paid for by the, the towns based on the volume and type of material they actually bring in. So it's a two-part piece. One's fixed and one's variable.
Yeah, I might.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I, I was just going to simply mention that, um, for many years I've gone to hazardous waste, uh, collections that have been distortions of towns and groups of towns together. As a matter of fact, we often send people to Augusta to participate in, in helping to staff that one. So really the, the, the only thing I see is traffic flow. Just make sure we manage traffic flow adequately. Go ahead, Catherine, please.
Thanks. Um, so last year we did it on a Saturday, um, and so we decided to move it to a Sunday this year, since we're open on Sundays now, to help with the traffic flow because Saturday is a very busy day. Uh, Sundays have a lot of traffic, but nothing like Saturdays. Uh, we also found last year, we didn't, everybody wasn't as scheduled as they could have been, um, ahead of time. And by by no later than ten o'clock, we were basically finished. We had stragglers coming in. Uh, and we were, we had a lot of staff there. We had maybe a dozen people, mostly volunteers, and we were just hanging out, having a great old time together. Um, so we really feel that this year, um, even with the addition of another town by by staggering when people are coming, by having them sign up ahead of time, it should be a much steadier flow, um, and we'll be sure to have traffic control out at the proper places so that traffic, uh, it's not coming in for hazardous waste will be able to get around easily.
Thank you for that, um, amplification, Catherine.
Welcome.
Um, are there any other questions for Eric on his report?
Eric, I just wanted to tell you that I sent you the email at the beginning of this meeting that had the governor's update, because I know that's the next item on your agenda. It's very short, like four sentences.
That means it's simple, right?
It is.
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay, so, um, we're all set then and we're going to move into old business and the first is, uh, oh, on an ongoing basis, we've been, uh, discussing the COVID nineteen situation and response and any necessary actions. And so we've set aside a little bit of time for that. Eric, the floor is yours. You provided, um, not only some background from the town, but I want to thank, uh, the Fire Department and Lee especially for this information on the standard operating guidelines regarding COVID SARS two virus and, uh, the operation, if you will, uh, by the Fire Department. This, it's very, very thoughtful and very thorough, so I really appreciate having that along with your very thoughtful and thorough background, uh, Eric. So go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so it, it did seem to be time to start addressing the, um, the, 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 really what is turning out to be a, a nearly full reopening, uh, with a few caveats. Um, and so, um, the, the memo that I did put together and I, I'll say as well, thanks to Lee. I mean, they have a very different standard, uh, of, of, um, different standard than we do here in the town office, uh, but, uh, it was great to see that come in because it truly did give, um, uh, me a lot of confidence that, um, that they were looking out for the best interest of the town. Uh, and my hope is that what we were doing and are doing, uh, is doing the same thing, looking out for the best interest of the town in, in, in the way that we can through our interactions between staff and the public, uh, and the services that we offer. So, uh, we are trying to be as open, uh, as possible and, um, Catherine and I did talk briefly before the meeting about the fact that we had, while I was drafting this or within an hour or so of completing it and putting it into the, to the packet, uh, there were changes being made. Um, and that's not unusual with this whole situation. Everything's changing. Uh, weekly, monthly, uh, and, and daily, uh, as we've, we're finding out. And so, uh, I did mention in here at one point that, um, you know, masks would be required in the town office uh, until, uh, the governor changed, um, the position of the state and that happened Friday. So, um, what I would like to do is have the board consider this memo, uh, as, um, uh, what I think it should be a fairly complete, um, a, a approach with the caveat that, uh, there is going to be a change related to the, uh, use of masks, uh, by employees and members of the public at both the transfer station and the town office, uh, essentially to, to line up with the governor's directive and the guidance from the federal government, saying that, uh, folks that are vaccinated, uh, will be allowed to, uh, utilize indoor and outdoor spaces without any distancing, uh, or, or mask, um, provided, uh, that they, that they have been vaccinated. Uh, and that folks who are not vaccinated are expected to wear a mask. Uh, with the members of the public, that is going to be just an expectation and a request. Uh, we're not going to be checking passes at the door. Uh, however, with employees, uh, I will be, uh, and, and volunteers in some cases, uh, particularly places like the library, uh, I will be confirming that those folks do have vaccination so that they can, you know, work freely, uh, without a, without a mask on. So- So at least that's my intent. The board may feel differently. But my my recommendation is that that we proceed in concert with the state and federal governments and that the other changes that I mentioned here be, I guess, accepted by the board.
So Eric, I have a question.
Sure.
Are you aware of other municipalities as requirement of employment? That, and again, with all the normal caveats for, you know, medical purposes or whatever, requiring employees to be vaccinated?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, for example, the the fire department directive that we saw really says that if you want to participate in a meaningful way, you have to be vaccinated. And that's that's fair, because they're dealing with public safety. And in many cases, we have staff that that will be, you know, and usually are just a few feet away from others, potentially for extended periods of time. The 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 need to to have folks either wear a mask or preferably be vaccinated is 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 there. And there are a number of towns that are requiring vaccination, primarily among first responders and firefighters who are on staff, but also for office staff and administrative staff as well.
Any other thoughts on that?
Well, I think I'd prefer to try a a softer approach initially. Try to have a have a request go out. I believe we still do have a few staff that are not vaccinated. But that's a conversation I need to have with them. And I'd like to try to incentivize, in large part through the the mask requirement, that that they do get vaccinated, so they can more freely interact with the public and enjoy their jobs more. I think failing that, it may be necessary, especially given the amount and nature of interaction we have with the public that we we could and probably ought to require staff to be vaccinated if they're going to continue to to participate in the workforce in a meaningful way.
Yeah, I mean, if we had an employee, and our positions are not structured like this. So the example I'm giving is an erroneous one. But if we had an employee who sat in an office and never interacted with the public, I I don't see an issue there. We also have an obligation to protect the public. And so that's where my concern lies with vaccination. And again, that's all said with all due deference to medical issues. And there are some legitimate reasons that somebody would not get vaccinated. I'm not prepared. I'm not prepared to to try to get a vote tonight or anything on this. But I would, I would like to see our employees all vaccinated. If you can pursue that with a soft approach for a very limited amount of time, I think that makes sense. But I do think at some point, we need to make, or the board ought to give you some direction. And the board may opt not to direct you to require a vaccination. I'm just saying where I'm coming from. I I think it's, it ought to be a condition of employment in serving the public. If I had a public business that interacted that closely with individuals, I would be requiring it of my employees. Anybody else want to chime in on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I don't have any problem with that. I know I was reading through the Department of Education guidance today, and things like plastic barriers can now be taken down between parties. You know, this is coming from the employer's standpoint. So there are all kinds of changes happening. I think if we have the fire department having a very clear standard for those who are vaccinated and those who are not, it's very reasonable for us to have the same thing for the rest of our town employees. It's not, I'm not trying to make it a scarlet letter thing. You know, I didn't get vaccinated, so now I wear a mask, so everybody knows I didn't get vaccinated. I don't think that's how it is really, because I know people who've been vaccinated who are still wearing masks, because they want to wear a mask, and they're wearing them outside. And, you know, that's your personal freedom. Right now, it hasn't really been a personal freedom. We've been instructed we have to. So I I don't see it as an issue. But if it, if you think it may be an issue, Eric, I guess I would suggest that we contact MMA and see if there are any issues with us making it a requirement. But I I think it makes sense, especially since the fire department is doing it that way. Thanks.
Any other comments?
I would, I would echo yours and Catherine's sentiments as to how we how we proceed with with town employees outside of the fire company. I think the fire company has set a great example. I think we also would need to look at the CBA to see. I don't recall that there's any language in that document that speaks to this, because when we finalized that agreement, this was not an issue. But there may be something in the weeds there that that we might need to be aware of. So air on the side of caution is is my 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 cautionary note. Tale of the New York Yankees, eight asymptomatic players who had been vaccinated. If they're asymptomatic, that means they can still transmit. So I think we still have to be very careful about about public contact, not only for the protection of our own employees, but for the people that are passing through our doors.
Hey, well, thank you. So Eric, I think you have a summation there of direction from the board, or I should say at least what the board considers is a good approach. So we'll move on, if you will, to the second draft revision of the select board roles and responsibilities. And this would actually be the second reading and adoption this evening. When we looked these over last time, Catherine had some suggestions on core responsibilities, which have added, they're in your packet and they're in red. And I took the liberty of bouncing those to Catherine first, just to see if that if that captured the essence of what she was recommending to us beyond just the conversation. Sometimes I don't catch everything exactly in its completeness. So it did. But this is open for discussion and and then eventually adoption or rejection this evening. Any questions or thoughts? Chris is shaking her head no, so we're good there. Anybody else have any?
I think it looks great, and I thank you for your willingness to have a suggestion. And I would make a motion that we approve the bylaws of the select board of the town of Reed Field, Maine, as presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve through the second reading and adopt the bylaws of the select board of the town of Reed Field, which is a policy, I would just add. Is there any discussion on, did I have a second on that? I did, Bruce, right? Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Do you have, do you have the copy in Word, Eric?
I believe so.
PDF on it.
I think I have it in Word, but if not, I'll let you know when you can just send me that and I'll.
Yeah, I just need to change the color. Just need to change the color of that. And I guess I would probably add the words, if you look on the very last page and the second column where it says approve, adopted, I would probably put the word and in there, prove and adopted. So that motion's on the floor. No other discussion being evident. I'll go for a vote. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And this was a select word goal that had been sitting out there for some time, and it was incumbent on me to do it. Thank you, everybody who pushed me and reminded me to get this done. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the selection of the preferred municipal retirement services providers. So I'm just going to defer to Eric, Ralph and Chris, who did the background lifting on on this RFP and and so forth.
All right, I'll just start quickly and say that I want to thank Ralph, Chris and Teresa for their involvement with this and Ralph particularly for his foresight and initiative in bringing this forward and pushing it to this point, because I believe that it will be a real benefit to employee retention and the overall quality of of employment in the town of Reed Field. So so thanks, everybody, for your involvement, and particularly Ralph for for bringing this forward. We did go through a few iterations with this. The memo outlines the process, which basically talks about subcommittee meetings and the fact that we had to organize and direct this effort. And we eventually got to the point of issuing an RFP that focused on three key areas, those being the having a financial advisor, who was the the lead to help make that connection between other, you know, people in the field and the town of Reed Field. And those other areas would be the plan administrator, the person that helps us create the plan and also checks it for compliance and validity and ensures that we are meeting all of our financial obligations and responsibilities to the employees and also to the oversight agencies that we are responsible to when we offer a retirement program like this. And then the third group would be the 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 investment fund, the the company or the the group of companies that actually provides the the investment tools and and options that the employees then have to to utilize. So we took this and said, rather than try to get individual groups, individual proposals, we really wanted to have one proposal coming in that encapsulated all three of those areas to make it easier for us to navigate and also to, well, mostly to make it easier for us to navigate, because it's a fairly complex issue. I've certainly learned a lot about this in the past six-plus months. So the RFP results are discussed in the memo very briefly and also a recommendation following a committee meeting that we had and some review that we did of those of those entities. And the approach really is here to work with a preferred provider, not to necessarily say that the other ones are out, but that we would like to try to work with one as a preference. And then if that doesn't work out, if we find we have a roadblock or something that's not not feeling right, we can then move on to the next and go through the same exercise of not quite negotiating, but the exercise of trying to build this this system and this program that we think is so important. So that's where we we are and were. The preferred provider was Sarah Dunkle with Atlantic Wealth Planning Group. And I I will open it up for the other folks on the committee, the subcommittee, to add anything or clarify anything that I might have misspoken on.
Chris or Ralph?
Well, I I think the preferred vendor will be a strong partner. I think in our in our conversations with this group, I at least got got a a strong sense that they will, they will meet the town's needs and be out in front of the curve, if you will, in terms of anticipating what it is we need to do. And their structure recommendations, I think, will make it easy for the plan trustees, who I assume will be the town manager and the finance director, to to manage the program in-house and have a competent resource to whom they can turn when there are questions. And the other part of it, I again had had a lot of comfort with the individual participant support network that this group will would supply. And again, as Eric says, none of this is cast in stone. So if it doesn't work, there's nothing to stop the town from from seeking alternative partners in any one of those three areas down the road. But this is a good jumping off point. It streamlines the process, which hopefully will get us to the goal of having something in place somewhere near the start of the next fiscal year, so that we'll be essentially starting with a clean slate and and hopefully attracting more participation on the part of existing employees and making town employment hopefully a more attractive option for people who are out there looking to join the workforce from a municipal perspective. So I thank Eric and Chris and Teresa for their collaboration. I I think I think we're off to a good start, and we have one more hurdle to cross, but we'll get there.
Thank you, Ralph. Anybody else? Any questions? I would take a motion then.
I move that we accept the RFP from Atlantic Wealth Planning Group and look to them for our retirement plan for our employees.
And Chris, would that motion, would that motion include the alternate rankings as well?
Yes.
Great. Is there a second, please?
I second that.
Good. It's been moved and seconded to, as stated with the RFP, to pursue that with Atlantic Wealth Planning Group with the two alternatives that are ranked further down as something we can pursue as well. Is there any discussion on that? Great. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. I figure probably about eight minutes for roll calls over the course of a meeting that you're going to say wants to go live here. I I do want to say that this has been one of our goals and a recent goal that we added this year to to the select board goal. So it's another step in 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 working on on our goal. So thank you, everyone. And of course, that brings us to another goal, which is the direction of the broadband internet service in Reed Field and a change for in the charge for broadband internet, the Internet Committee. So Eric has basically built a document that's very similar to how we staff up other committees. We have an active ad hoc committee at work now. Catherine is our select board liaison with that committee. We would probably formally reappoint them or 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 whatever. I'm a little reluctant to pursue a charge for them too awfully specifically at this point, because I I I know everybody here knows that my preference in direction is to leapfrog and to take us to fiber without a lot of other steps in between. I think that's technologically what we need to do. However, we're asking that question on the warrant. We're asking an advisory question from the public. So if the select board were to charge this committee specifically with pursuing, say, for example, fiber or whatever number of steps they want to, it would seem to me, having that advisory vote in your in in the background would be very helpful. So it would be helpful if it was a yes, obviously, is what I would urge my fellow residents to consider. It would be helpful to say the town is behind it. And if for some reason we hear it, the town's saying no, then we know we have some work to do in terms of talking about what direction we need to go in and why we believe what we believe. That's all I have on that. Other thoughts?
I just, I just want to say this. First of all, I was, I was early on getting all of the emails, and it was overwhelming. So I want to say, number one, that it's been awesome to have Catherine be a part of this. So I'm just publicly thanking you, Catherine, because I, it it literally makes my head explode. So thank you very much. I also, I also think that the work that has happened so far somehow, in my mind, would be undermined or would be somehow lessened if if anything other than fiber to the home was the option. And and I know, like, like Bruce said, we still And I know, like Bruce said, we still have to wait to see what happens with the vote, which I think, you know, I'm excited about to see what happens. But we, has not this last year taught us the utility equivalent that the internet provides and the wild disparity in access and speed is something that we have the ability to fix in our town and make it special. And I think Reedfield is special. And I really hope that we can make that, it's that. It's shoot the moon. So that's how I feel.
Bruce?
Yes.
I do would like to thank Catherine for a deep dive into the weeds here. This stuff, if I had anything between my ears, my head probably would explode too. I'm just wondering, Catherine, if you are aware of what the state is doing, I hear things about some sort of a subgroup that might take ownership of an expansion plan and essentially, my surface read is it might co-opt what the heck we're trying to do here. So if you have any knowledge of what is going on there and what the legislative status is of of any kind of legislative agenda, would be helpful to know.
You know, I could add to that, Catherine, before, because I want to just piggyback on what Ralph said before you answer. And there have been some times where people have fought with one leg. I was running and with one leg I was dragging my foot on parts of this project. And that seemed a little weird perhaps, but I, all along, I've been in hopes that there was a pocket of federal or state dollars that was significantly large that would somehow impact our arrangement here. And that seems to be developing, but I don't know yet. So Catherine, I'm going to let you go ahead and speak your mind, please, on it.
Dennis, did you want to add one more thing? No, okay. I wasn't sure about that hand. So, well, thank you all. I'm just happy that the only amount I'm digging into the weeds on this is, is as the Reedfield member, and I did not have to become the head of that committee, which Stan Davis from Wayne took on, because it was looking for a while, like we weren't going to get anybody. So I'm really happy that was Stan. So there are a whole bunch of things happening. And I think moving forward, and this gets into something I want to talk about just before we leave tonight, but so I'll just mention it now. So Bruce and Chris are going to be leaving us and Dennis is our current vice chair. So I know that we will be having new appointments coming up for chair, vice chair, note taker, liaisons, et cetera. But I would really like us to consider putting broadband on the agenda for every select board meeting until we have the issue resolved. I just think, as you guys have said, we need regular updates and you need them kind of concise instead of all the digging in the weeds. And if it's on the agenda, then we could just have something in writing that gives you an update without it having to drag on and trying to figure it out, hearing it just while you're sitting in a meeting. So the current thing that's happening is the, it's called Connect Maine, and that is taking the Federal Cares Act and another programs, monies that are coming into the state and the state is deciding how to allocate them. And one of those ways is through this Connect Maine initiative. Another is through county funds because counties were given monies and those are being asked for from different groups. And the W K C B L A is asking for money from the Kennebec County Government or will be. This Collect Maine schedule just came to us, I believe, today through our, oh, let's see, what do we call Brian Leopold, Eric, our advisor?
Consultant.
Right. And it looks like the Connect Maine grants have to be in by November 22nd of this year for anybody who wants to get any of that money. And I think that's 123 million that came into the state. I'm not sure. That changes also. But they are now actually setting up their rules. And so there's a timeline here of dates that go every couple of weeks through the summer and into the fall. So it's good that we're, that we've been working on getting things together, that the coalition has been making progress based on the vote that we have in June from the public in Reedfield that will help to direct us. We're going to be having monies coming, which I've mentioned before, coming into Reedfield that we can use to do our initial engineering phase, which is probably going to be necessary to have done in order to apply for this grant that is due by the 22nd of November. So that'll be something we'll want to act on right away. Either yay or nay, I'm not trying to influence how we go with that. But so timeliness is really of the essence. There are some other options that have been coming up and I think it's important. I guess I'll just say I am absolutely, completely 98% behind fiber to the phone. So it's not complete, 98%. And my concern is that we have to convince the public that this is a worthwhile expenditure. And the town of Reedfield absolutely, hands down, can afford this. Our indebtedness is not very high. So to take on a $4 million bond would be fine, but we have to have the people in town agree to that. And if they're hesitant or unwilling, then I think we do owe it to the public to try and have other options if there are any. So that's why I asked Eric and Bruce in the charge for this committee to allow the committee to investigate other options, just to take all the information in, have it available, and then make recommendations that we think are in the best interest of the town. So I like the way the tasks have been listed, maybe rather than just a charge outright, Bruce, I think that was very wise. And I will just be hearing about this a lot because I agree with everything you said, Dennis.
Yeah, I don't see anything as necessarily actionable tonight. I mean, all these people already serve on the broadband committee, so I would think you'd be appointing them or confirming them again in June at your larger meetings and maybe rounding out that seventh slot as well. So unless there's a reason for something to be actionable tonight, I don't, I think we're just having the discussions. Is that what everybody's understanding?
I actually thought we were not going to consider this to be ad hoc any longer. I thought we were going to make this a broadband internet committee, Eric. You're muted.
Can't hear me.
I think that's a good idea, by the way.
That was suggested, yeah.
Muted or not make it ad hoc?
No, make it a regular committee. Make it a regular town committee.
Yeah, so I would like to change what's in there and propose that we make these appointments to strike ad hoc and then go ahead and confirm these folks for that two-year period ending in June of 2022. And at that point, they could then be reappointed or not if they don't want to serve any longer.
I would second it.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to appoint the broadband internet committee and crossing out the words ad hoc and understanding that they're a regular committee. And of course, that gives anybody the opportunity to say no, I suppose, since we're changing our status. But I think these are all excited, interested people, so I don't think that's going to happen. Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just, I just am concerned that there seem to be a lot of players with this thing in motion and with a lot of money out there. I don't know whether or not the state initiatives and the county initiatives will co-opt the late groups' efforts or how we will partner with them. But I think we have to be very careful how we watch this process so that A, we don't find ourselves out on a limb without support, but B, we're not, we're not, our objectives aren't being taken over by a larger group that may not have the same sentiments that are representative of what our group wants to do. And how you do that, I don't know, but I think that is going to be a significant challenge as we move forward.
Yeah, this committee will always have moving targets and competing issues. Go ahead, Catherine.
I have to bring it back, sorry. What was it Ralph was saying?
Competing interests and our objectives may be, may be being lost by larger players out there that might not necessarily feel the same way we do.
Right. So there are two ways this can play out in terms of funding. Even with the increased standard that they're talking about to call a town underserved as opposed to unserved, Reedfield will still not qualify. So we stand to get almost no funding from any opportunity unless it's an equally funded amount like this first amount that we're going to receive in May of this year and May of next year, where it's just given to every town based on a metric, then we receive it. Otherwise Reedfield won't be according to all the data now. If we go in with the WKLCBA and we go in as a group to however many towns that is, it could be two up to five because Leeds is not interested in doing that. They're going in a different direction currently. Then we would be part of a larger group and that group has some extremely underserved communities. So the whole group, if there, if we're a group of towns, there may be a benefit to the group, in which case Reedfield would reap some of that benefit. But then that all depends on how we structure the agreement that the WKLCBA comes up with for management, if Reedfield gets any of that or not. So you're right, there are moving target pieces, moving targets. There are people right on top of that. And I have to tell you, one of the smartest voices in that whole crowd is sitting right here with us, our town manager. He is right on top of this. The voice of reason, the voice of knowledge, just an excellent person to be on that committee.
Great. We have a motion on the floor of appointments, so why don't we vote on that? To make sure we've done that. So any other discussion on the appointments? Dennis?
Yes?
We're voting on the slate of appointments that was in the back.
Okay. Well, you asked, was there any other, was there any other discussion? And then you said my name. So then I wanted to say no, but then I thought, well, are we?
We're voting. I'm sorry. I wasn't clear.
Affirmative. I answer.
Next year should really learn how to be clear.
I don't know.
Yes.
Ralph?
Oh, my God, yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce says a yes. I just have one last thought on this and that is, I think we need to come up with a way of, when we talk about bonding and $4 million, for example, we need to talk about how that is structured. We need to find a simple way to do that. Because this is not a bond that is paid back by the town. It's paid back by the proceeds of the uptake and the subscribers. I mean, that's the intent. There, I mean, there may be some co-development in there and the town of Reedfield will probably be a customer of it as well. But in any case, this is not like our, a bonding of a fire truck. It's not like the bonding of roads and so forth. So I think we need to be very, we need to find a better way to describe that. Maybe the word bond isn't even the right word. I don't know. Just a thought. So we are at 7:54. We have winter roads and a change in location to discuss. I don't think we need to take a long time on all of those, but why don't I take a motion to extend the meeting to, say, 8:10 and maybe we can wrap up business well before that.
So moved.
Second? Okay, great. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce says yes. Okay, so now we're going to discuss the outcome of the winter roads maintenance RFP. Eric, you gave us a little bit of preview on that already.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll just, I'll just pick up where I left off and say that after receiving no formal bids twice, we did reach out to the town attorney on, you know, best practices going forward and confirmed my, my understanding that we could then attempt to work independently with the various contractors. We could do more direct solicitation and basically ask folks to come in and if they, any of them have an interest to give us their best, their best offer. But to do that within the context of a firm deadline and the understanding that we wanted to meet and match as closely as possible, the the expectations that were set forward in that RFP that had gone out twice. So what we have done is reached out to six or eight other contractors. I've also reached out to a few local towns. The towns that we're talking with have a different obligation, a different responsibility. We can negotiate with another town without any restriction. But if we do involve the contractors, we need to give them a deadline. So what we've done is said, if you have an interest in providing the service for the town of Reedfield, give us your best offer by the end of this month. And that would put us in a position where if we have one or two folks that come in, we can then compare something apples to apples and make a decision on who we want to work with. Again, based on a process, it's a little bit less rigid and rigorous than what we would have gone through originally with the formal RFP process. So in short, we're just moving ahead, trying to find a service provider that can meet our needs with a little bit, a little bit more flexibility in how we discuss the process with them. And they have some, you know, I guess more flexibility in how they respond. They might say, well, you know, I don't want a bid bond. I don't want to provide XYZ. If I hit a mailbox, the resident pays for it, whatever it might be. That's probably a bad example.
It probably was.
Probably was. If I hit a mailbox, the town is responsible for paying for it. That's more like it. They might have some things like that, that normally we would not be willing or interested in discussing, but again, given the more freedom in the process, we can consider some of that because we're not in dire straits, but we're we're not in the best position. I think that given the communications that I've had with a number of these, you know, contractors, and I will say Anna really has done a ton of work on this. She's been a great communicator and a go-getter, really reaching out to firms that we hadn't heard from for a couple of years and saying, hey, you do this kind of work. Why don't you come, come, come take a look at this? That's one of the things she's very good at and she has done that for us in this case. So I expect that I'll be coming back to you sometime in early June, perhaps the, could be as early as the 7th. But, you know, it might be the 21st to discuss this again, hopefully with a couple of proposals.
Well, I, I just kind of take that as an update and, you know, I think one thing that government needs to do is, I mean, we would prefer just to throw an RFP out there and have somebody meet all its conditions and give us a low price and that's very nice. And but you always have to deal with the real world. And so to be nimble and flexible in terms of this approach, and thank you for getting the legal background advice on that, that's always important. I'm all for what you're doing. But I would like my mailbox replaced.
Bad example, sorry.
Any other comments from anybody on, on the winter roads maintenance? I think it's time to just full steam ahead. Okay, great. We do need to officially approve a change, a notice of change in location for the June 8, 2021 town meeting, particularly since we're telling everybody where it's going to be. And when we say town meeting, it's really the voting. And I guess I just want to express again, my sincere appreciation to the to Kentville School. I think this is fabulous. It's all on one floor. You walk in, you vote. I mean, I hope we can do that for actually a long time. The parking's great and so forth. The parking's great and, and so forth. There aren't stairs to negotiate or lifts to wait for. It, it's easy sometimes perhaps for a small vote to do it at, at town hall, but I think for a major election, this is great. So.
I would bring the motion to approve the notice of change in location of voting place for the June 8, 2021 annual town meeting secret ballot vote as presented.
Any discussion? Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved to adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Dennis?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Let the record show that we only went one minute into the 10.
Great job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night, all.
Bye.
Good night.
Thanks, everybody.